Hey, everyone online. We'll get started here at 3:05.
You can just come and dance.
All right, well, let's get started. It is, I should start. Calling to reading this or calling to order this meeting of the Economic Development Advisory Board. It's 3:05 PM. July 27. Thanks, everybody, for coming. It's been a long, somewhat arduous process to actually get everyone So I'm really excited to welcome a handful of faces today, online and in person. And so, let's Dennis, member of the board, Forrest Rogers, member of the board, and Karen, who's here online, member of the board. I'll do a quick, we'll do a quick introduction before we get into anything in a second, but let's just go through complex interest disclosures or expectation communication. If anyone has any of those two disclosures. Hearing none, are there any citizens to be heard? There are none. Let's do introductions. I am the economic development director for Grant County. I think everybody knows me. Mary, do you want to go next?
Mary McGann, Grant County Commission.
Viga Metzner, Moab, Valley, Valley. Jonathan Beck, in Maritown of Castle Valley.
That Forrest Rogers from Moab Museum.
Lacy Shumway, Marcher Commerce.
Laura Harris, Development Specialist.
Caitlin Myers, more of a community land trust.
Edith Stuck, Assistant Marketing Director of Grant County Economic Development.
You seen Dennis, private sector, into premier.
Karen, you want to go next?
Oh, hi, Karen Guzman Newton. Yes. Do I get to identify, like, why, I feel like
Say whatever you want.
Witness Protection Program, it looks really dark right now.
That's great, you better. Kelly?
I'm Kelly Thornton with the Department of Workforce Services.
Noah?
Sorry, I had to find that unmute. I'm Noah. I'm with Rural Community Assistance Corporation. I'm just listening in today, so thanks for having me.
I helped to develop the RFP for strategic plan over there. And then Rachel, I don't know if you're want to say anything, but
She, they're my girl.
Okay, she's at the office, she's doing meetings, she's our administrative assistant. Okay, I'm gonna hop right in. And then Ben Alter from our team, also just joining the call. Okay, so I have a couple of slides here. Just to kind of orient ourselves. You know, there's been a lot of change, two different boards all becoming one, and then a slow process of getting everybody there. Filling up that, those vacancies. I've talked with the new board members, Dennis Forrest and Karen last week, and tried to kind of get everybody up to speed. But I thought it would be worthwhile to do just a quick check-in with everybody so that if you are on the economic diversification board, the development board, and now we're kind of getting on the same track, mission, vision, resources, et cetera. So I'm gonna go over that quickly. It has been started today. So I'll kind of go over big picture, a little bit of an overview of the rural county grants, a little bit of focus on economic diversification. Specifically, as it pertains to TRT carve-out that we have, spent money, spent great programs with. And then we created a Google Drive folder that should be a really good resource for the board that has all of this information in one place, rather than just attaching things to the calendar invite and hot emails. So all of this information will be under, will be in there for future reference. Okay, so we got consolidated board, we have two funding sources, there's one mission, and it's focused on strategic planning. I think that did this great. So to start from the very beginning, in March 2020, as an overview, the state legislature passed SB 95, which created the rural county grant program. In May 20, the Economic Development Advisory Board was established to fulfill those statutory requirements. There had to be a county economic development board to advise the county on how to spend, do reporting, all of the above for that particular program. December of the same year, the Economic Diversification Action Plan and Economic Diversification Advisory Council was established as a distinct work. And then, in March of 2021, HB 247 passed, which created a new eligible use for TRT expenditures specifically for economic diversification. Then I was also hired in March of 2021 to be the first economic non-tourist person in our office and to start building out those programs. January 2022, we start talking about consolidating these two boards and having bigger conversations about strategic planning, all of the above. And here we are, the board consolidation is finalized, and now we're off to the races. So, I kind of just pulled some pieces from the ordinance that was passed. The big picture mission, I think, is captured here pretty well, which is that, you know, Grand County aims to increase its prosperity, resilience as a community by diversifying the economy and strengthening existing industries. And then, really, that the county is looking for vital input from residents, business leaders, and elected officials to prioritize economic development projects and opportunities. So that's there is a focus on economic diversification. So the county commission maintains that economic diversity is an essential component for health, society, and economy, and a diverse economy is more resilient, because unexpected or uncontrolled, vulnerable to And then the third piece is that there's a kind of a called-out, specific focus for strategic planning, right? So the commission recognizes the need to provide clear direction, measurable goals, and objectives for staff. Melissa, myself, Ben, Rachel, Robert, Vega, in the commitment to diversify the economy in Grant County. Secondly, that the commission has identified the need for the Grand County Economic Diversification Advisory Council, have time to review existing and future ordinances, to identify, mitigate barriers to economic diversification, assist the commission and staff, leading an updated economic development strategic plan, which we'll talk about later. Quick overview on the rural county grant. So again, statutorily required to be part of that. More here, but first section, it basically says, state code says we have to have this, so we're gonna have it. The second piece says, these are the requirements in state code that we have to have on the boards. We have to have a county rep, we have to have a rep from municipalities in the county, we have to have a workforce development rep, private sector, and a member of the public that lives in the county, and we can add whoever else we want. So we've done that here, we're satisfying requirements. Specifically, the board is, shall assist and advise county commission on applying for the rural county grants, funding, figuring out what programs to fund and prepare reports, basically. So those are all specifically called out in state code. And then, the focus of the rural county grant program is designed to address economic development needs of rural counties, which needs may include business recruitment, development, expansion, workforce training, development, and infrastructure, capital, facilities, and So that's kind of captures the scope of the rural county grant piece. It's a quick overview of what we've done with that so far. In fiscal year 21, which is June 2020, or July 2020, June 2021, we got the maximum allotment, which was 95,833 that year, distributed 65 grants to 19 local organizations through a small grant program. $15,000 went to the markets to support to build out of the core thing space, $10,000 went to childcare, or childcare supply expansion, three grand went to, basically, higher debt, more or less. And then that's, that's idealized, a separate report that everybody can take a look at on their own time. And then Part B wasn't available in fiscal year 21. Part B is a competitive grant piece. First part is basically guaranteed. And the next round, we were awarded maximum allotment of 200 grand. We applied for all manner of things, it's a pretty big list, we should pare it down, and we're kind of at the final stages of figuring out who's gonna get that final piece. We'll talk a little bit about that later. We're also rewarded $300,000, the largest of all applicants, only one other organization, one other county got that much, which was used to support pre-development and site control, and how some skyline arts, for now, the development at Land Trust. A quick overview, almost the whole time. On the left, there was the original budgeted amount for the rural county grant, fiscal year 2028, and how that shifted as we kind of focused our priorities throughout the year. So, on the bottom of the pot, bottom of the top, the emerocore vista, we have spent that our slate to give this in our office, but we haven't exactly declared what like that person to do, or hired that person. Spent 10 grand, which is basically the net loss of running the Kingland Business Summit after sponsorships, ticket revenue. And then the daycare grants, we actually just officially made happen last week, which is great. So really, the last piece here that we need to knock out is clarifying exactly what the report's house and support looks like. We'll talk more about that later today. And a quick timeline for this year, looking forward. So we need to support, submit a report of how we spent the money that I just talked about to the state by September 1st this year. So we basically have August at this point to figure out the final allotment, get it out of county conference. The state doesn't really care about the final dispersion, just we have to spend it, allocate it, prioritize it. So that's imminent. The second piece is, once we've satisfied that reporting requirement, on October 1st, we get to request the fiscal year 23 allotment, and put a budget together for that. So in September, we'll be thinking about that. They changed the, okay, so then we have to report by November 1st on how that skyline arch funding got spent, basically, from hospital. And then, Part B has changed, it's now called the rural communities public treaty grant, and it's a rural municipality project, too. So basically, they saw that, you know, counties are taking advantage of this, the place like Castle Valley Town, for example, you know, can't get into this pot of money, even if they have a lucrative project. And so, that's more open, so I think more competitive, and they really try to make it as neat space as possible. So I would, I see that as rural municipalities, really, they're probably gonna get it before we already have guaranteed money. Get that, but you should still probably go after that one. I'll pause. Are there any rural county grant questions while it's still fresh on the mind, before I kind of go on to the next piece? Now, okay, economic diversification, so what's in the ordinance specifically, created the Economic Diversification Advisory Council, quote, "to advance policies and activities that aim to shorten the gap between wages and the cost of living by creating, contracting, growing higher-paid job opportunities for residents." And what that body did last year, I think there's a lot, a long period of, you know, really trying to clarify what the mission of that body was, how they were gonna make an impact, what the focus was, et cetera. And by the end of the year, we had, we did this really great prioritization exercise. We basically tried to figure out, like, you know, given a blank slate, how should we prioritize these programs? And came out with a master plan, or what we're calling a strategic plan now, was the most important thing we could do. And the second most important was business expansion grants. And the rest on there, I think, are important, but we're kind of pushed through the prioritization pipeline. So, as we'll see in a second, that's really what we prioritized there, that piece this year, our strategic plan, and what has become a starter, basically. So a little bit of detail on that specific carve-out of TRT. So that House bill basically allows Grand County to spend up to 12.33%, which is actually 1/30 of 37%, but we don't include that. On, quote, "economic diversification activity," which is defined very broadly as an economic development activity that is reasonably similar to supplements or expands any economic program as administered by the state or the governor's office of economic development. So I've talked to the board in the past, pretty much everything that's authorized under the rural county grant program is eligible for this definition. So anything that we get approved for the state to do through rural county grants, we can basically expand and use this money to spend just to, to, to build out I'm not a lawyer, but that's my, like takeaway. So a quick, high-level review of how much money that actually looks like. So in 2021, total TRT collections were just under $900 for the county, which meant that the maximum, max allowable spend on economic diversification is a little over $1 million. In 2021, about 130,000 was spent on economic diversification. Basically, we hadn't developed any programs, so not a lot of money was spent. So that means that coming into 2022, there's just under $1 million reserves that were restricted to economic diversification that we have available to us. In 2022, the total anticipated kind of allotment for economic diversification was over $1 million. I think that's probably gonna be revised down, as we're seeing, you know, softening the situation. So I'm anticipating that, I don't know for sure, but for the sake of budgeting. So what we budgeted, which is in that bottom table, for economic diversification this year, excluding salaries, is $850,000. So those top two are well on their way to being real. The strategic plan, we put budgeted 65 grand on, and in conversations that happen with people based on the scope we're putting out there, that might have to get bumped up. But the, the STAR grant, which is the local expansion program, budgeted a half a million dollars for, we've already exceeded that in requests, and so we're probably going to part and see that at the end of the day. So there could be a conversation at some point saying, hey, all these programs are great, maybe we release some more money, ask the commission to release more money.
Some stuff from the money that weren't spent last year?
Yeah, basically, unallocated diversification spend. We did also kind of put placeholders for workforce development and kind of marketing to make sure that people are taking advantage of those programs, but those, at this point, are largely either underused or not defined at this point. So you know, there's, the point of this is that there's a lot of money that has yet to be planned and expended, and I think that as we put together a strategic plan, it'll, we have a lot of resources that we can put towards whatever strategic priorities are from the strategic planning process. Forward-looking, so for 2023, the budget process starts in September for the county. The travel council actually has statutory responsibility to submit to the county commission a prioritized list of expenditures for TRT across the board, so whether that's towards a promotion, economic diversification, recreation film, et cetera, to the county commission. Whereas this body does not necessarily, but I think the role for this body in that process is to basically put a proposal together to submit to the travel council board to add, to consider, and then add to their request to the county commission, more or less. I think it's how we should do that. Any questions on rural county grants, general mission, economic diversification stuff? I'm gonna go into the Google Drive, look at some files for a second.
So how many applications have we got so far?
Ben is going to speak to that in a minute. We have an update on the local grants. Hey, I'm just gonna keep talking on. So let's open this up. So I shared this with you all the other day, and it contains, this is for economic development advisory board, and it has files for the diversification advisory council as well, but everything that's relevant for this year is gonna be here, dead 2022. And this first file has kind of like the most, it's a really useful starting point. So we've got the contact lists for everybody on the board. So anybody's trying to reach them, we have emails, I don't have every phone number yet, but it might be useful, put the numbers in there. But I have, are they voting, are they ex hoc, is it required by the original SB 95? What is the term? What is their position, et cetera? And then this meeting index has all of the agendas, recordings, and meetings for every meeting this year. So, yeah. I mean, this is mostly for us, but anybody's thinking, if you recover this, or kind of find a recording or anything like that, it's super accessible, and we keep it pretty up to date. Meeting info is where I'm gonna keep all of the, for each meeting, all the documents. So for today, going into July, and then into July 27th, this is all of the documents that we're using and referencing today. So all of the minutes to be approved are here. The slides that I'm working on are here for future reference, minutes from this meeting that Rachel's already working on, we're gonna be in here. The scope of work that we'll discuss, and agenda itself. There's also the minutes from the past meetings, recordings, the actual raw files, but it's easier to access that through the index table. And then laws and ordinances, this has, this will have like the bylaws of the body, the establishing ordinance, any state code law that reference here. So I think that's the, all is useful, basic stuff, but I don't need to dwell too much on that. Any questions? Did everybody, is everybody able to access this? Is anybody not able to access this? Okay. Right along that. All right, next on our agenda is approval of a lot of meetings. So I would entertain a motion to approve the May 19th, June 13th, June 29th, July 7th, July 12th, and July 13th, economic development by the board.
So move.
Second.
Awesome. So that was movement. Motion was made by Forrest, second by Kelly. I'd entertain a vote. Or I guess any discussion, does everybody feel comfortable with those meetings, or have any changes?
I mean, there were a lot of us that weren't at all.
I think it's, if, try to give enough time to review them, so, you know, if there's any
Ensure that.
Yeah. I think that's okay. But I would entertain all of it.
August, I, just a technical question, would it be appropriate not to vote since, like, for the new members, as we're, we're not a part of the Mary, you know?
I don't, I think, I don't think it really matters.
Yeah.
I, you know.
It's basically like, does everything, is everything in there accurate?
I, I wouldn't know.
So it's the best of your knowledge, you know, you were there for one of them, that's
I think it's a, they can abstain if they
Yeah, if you feel uncomfortable, go through this, abstaining, you have more voting members in fact, in fact. And as a reminder, voting members here today are Dennis, Lacy, Forrest, Karen, Kelly. Somebody didn't say your name, you're not a voting member. So with that, Mike, I think we can go ahead and throw it on this motion. All favor? Any, any opposed? Any abstaining?
I'm, I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, so all, all voted in favor, except for Karen. Awesome. So we do have, moving on to the next agenda item, I've been chairing this meeting basically for a long time. On, we do have work positions in the bylaws for chair, vice chair. And I found on the travel council, it's really actually quite useful to have someone else holding our office accountable, following up, kind of being the lead, and then having a vice chair ready to step in, that chairperson who needs. If we don't feel, people don't feel comfortable, like, nominating someone or taking this on, we can all postpone this to another meeting.
I thought our bylaws said we did that every September.
That's a very good point. This is why we have documents. In that case, we could wait for the next one. In that case, that's what we have.
Do you know, does a chair have to be a voting member?
It might, I, my guess is if I just clarify
Right.
it probably could be.
It says something about annual meeting, that answer him that we did that.
Okay, so it says, it says, "In the annual meeting, an annual meeting of the members shall take place in the month of September, is the date, time, and location of which will be designated by the chair. At the annual meeting, the member shall, like, officer, receive reports on a consideration, turn back up, priority consideration." So that's required by the SB 95, which just means we have to have, like, at the very least, an annual meeting, basically. So we could, because it does say, that's where we sort of, we like officers, we could postpone until September meeting, get our feet under us. Do it then, I'd be happy to keep Karen.
You okay for too much?
Or you know, so often, when people are elected, they do it year after year after year, and so I don't see any problem, since it's on the agenda of the nominee, nominated company today. So they can get their feet under the ground, see if it's something they enjoy and want to do, and then they can determine
Reevaluate it September.
Yeah, reevaluate your September meeting, but I think it would be nice for you to be able to have some of that responsibility taken off your shoulders. I can't nominate, or, but it is, you know, so I would recommend that we, we have somebody become a chair if we can today.
It's currently vice chair.
Because we had, Gabe was vice chair, and the chairperson, I can't remember who it was, but gave to go over as chair, there's a vice chair, yeah. And he was not with a member, so I think we can have, so there's vice chairs who are not, so So I mean, I didn't think any, any motions So I mean, I didn't think any, any motions to nominate anybody.
Is there anyone interested?
Anybody online interested in chair or vice chairship? I can also.
It looks like Karen's raising her hand.
The dark one.
Only the shadow.
I, I meant to have maybe some ahead of time conversation, people figure out what would be up for this, but I wasn't able to do that this time.
Can you go over just a couple, like a few of the expectations?
Yeah, that's a great.
Yes, so well, it says that the responsibility of the chair is on. So. The chair shall preside at all meetings of the membership and the chair shall have following duties, preside. And then ensure any ongoing reporting requirements are met, the officer will fill that. Typically, they're also. Right, agenda, which is not, not called out here in the bylaws. But it's basically being the Robert's rules master, more or less, keeping things going. All that kind of stuff.
Julie Cruz director.
Sure. And then the vice chair is. Basically, yeah, has the same responsibilities as the chair.
Sounds really fun.
Mike, I mean, we are missing two members.
Well, I mean, we could nominate some people that aren't here. Because they're usually here.
Yeah.
I mean, like Rob's here a lot.
How is, how is Robert's rule, since he knows, is there anyone who just already knows, or is it going to be taking somebody?
It's not, I know a little bit. Not a lot. It's not a hard one. I'm very comfortable with Robert's rules.
Right.
Rob's really bright, he can figure it out.
He's the chair of the, the.
Oh, that's true.
Whether it's lots of chairs.
It may not be open public media act at that, though. There's just another way.
We're not even. Well, I don't want to spend too much time on this, so if we're not, if we're not feeling good about like putting someone out there and they do this, you can wait, like call people around and see if it's up for it. With the votes for.
I, can I move to table this to the next meeting?
Yeah, I would entertain a motion to postpone this agenda item to.
One second.
Yeah, so.
Oh, I thought she was, sorry. I moved to postpone this agenda item next week.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? All right. I hear Karen and Forrest. Lacy, Kelly?
I, I, sorry, I was raising my hand, but you probably can't see that.
Okay, so that passes unanimously, so that's going to wrap that. All right, it's time for Ben to shine. I don't see him online. Got an update on local business grants.
Where is he in the office?
Hello.
There he is.
Great. I'll stop sharing and I'll let you, do you have anything to share, Ben, or screen, please?
Yeah, I can share something. Okay. So I'll make my update brief, just because I'm working on this stuff and some other stuff right now. The deadline for our two local business grants, the STAR business grant and the Moab tourism grant are coming up on the 31st. And we've received a little under 30 applications for both grants total. None have floated in today, since we last checked in this morning, August, just some supplemental materials. But I do just want to show everyone just a small resource that I put together. If you are talking to businesses about the grant, or if you are representing a business that's applying for a grant. So I'm just going to share my screen briefly. Okay, hopefully everyone can see our awesome county website. So. Right now, I am at grandcountyutah.net/grant. The two grants that I'm talking about are the Moab tourism grant and the sustainable and resilient or STAR business grant. If you click on either one. Something for applicants to know that's very important is that their supplemental documents, those are profit and loss statements and or startup costs. Their budget and anything else they want us to know about the project. It's as simple as just emailing grants@grandcountyutah.net. That email address may or not just go to me, but it's very helpful to have a second email address. Right here is an aide that I put together for folks. It's basically just a checklist to remind folks that these are the bare minimum of things that you will need. If you're not proposing construction or large infrastructure updates and you don't need construction quotes. If you do, we're providing a 20% contingency on that because we understand the market's a little bit crazy right now. For the project budget, we're asking that folks use our templates and they are available to download right here. Our profit and loss statement template is not the coolest, so I have more if people are having trouble. And then we're also checking to see if businesses are verified. So that's just making sure that your business is considered an active registered business by the state of Utah. We're doing something as simple as going here and typing in something like that to see if you are in fact active. That's all we're checking on when we have that requirement there. I just wanted to clear that up in the hopes that if you're getting questions about this in the community, you can help folks clear it up as well. And I'll just reiterate that for folks who want to apply, there is this webinar that walks you how to do the application. I go into more detail about the requirements here. And then as you scroll down, you can get more about the grants, the build, the overview, the goals. And some other resources for applicants in terms of drafting your materials or looking for certain economic indicators that we'll be considering when we consider these applications. So I'm happy to take questions right now. Unfortunately, I'm not prepared enough to provide a substantive update on how the application intake is going. Because I'm working on just making sure that all the prospective applicants do have the proper information and are all set. The deadline is the 31st. But I'm happy to take any questions that the board does have about how the grant application process is going.
My question, you shared briefly today, like the number of applications received or completed so far. And the number, like the amount of basically, request, the amount requested, I think that's probably my.
Sure. Yeah, so I, I still haven't tabulated exactly from this morning, but. From what I have seen, the applications that I either have in hand or know I will receive by Sunday night. It looks like for the. The STAR grant, we have a pot of about $500,000 and our requests are going to end up at being around $750,000. For the Moab tourism grant, our pot is $55,000. And right now, we haven't actually hit that marker yet. We're still hovering right now in like the mid 40s. But I am expecting some other applications to come in and I don't know what sums they're asking for. So when it comes to the tourism grant, it looks right now like we're about at capacity for the STAR business grant. We're definitely slightly over what we budgeted for, just in terms of asks. So all this is to say, you know, we publicized this as, you know, potential awards of up to 100,000. And we're excited to see folks apply for that, but I also encourage businesses to check the box saying that they would accept a lower sum if it's, if it's offered to them. Because the $100,000 category is getting pretty competitive. But right now, I think that's the big takeaway is we're looking at around like $750,000 in requests and some really cool projects, I have to say. I'm really excited to see what our evaluation committee selects because everyone's really putting their best foot forward.
Any questions for Ben? We don't have to, we have plenty of stuff to talk about. Okay, thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Ben. Yeah, of course, glad to chime in with any other pieces of information and everyone has my email, I hope. But grants@grandcountyutah.net is a really easy way to reach me with any grant related questions.
Brad, applications, close this one. All right, can you stop sharing your screen? Next, the agenda, rural county grant party update, pretty timeline, so I kind of covered part of that already. But specifically, we wanted to talk about the housing piece. There's a couple of things, we're talking about, we're talking about, you know, a de restriction pilot, we've been talking about the DU incentive pilot program. They're talking about a housing forum, and we've talked about supporting the assured housing nexus study that I think is on, is on right now. We do have Laura and Caitlin, if you want to speak to any and all of that, I guess, I don't, I don't know what we're. Maybe more than anything else, but like, if there's any piece of that, kind of help us understand.
And Laura and Caitlin, let me know when you'd like me, if you'd like me to put up our proposed budget for the housing forum. I can share my screen when you get to that topic, just let me know.
I think, like I slash we can talk about the de restriction pilot program. I feel like you've been spearheading that in terms of the ADU assistance program, that might be more of you that's wrong, but everything else.
Do you want to start with the housing forum piece, or where do you want?
Sure, yeah, we can start with the housing forum. So basically, as August outlined, we have this budget all being prioritized for workforce housing and housing assistance and everything. And so Caitlin and I are the chair and the vice chair of the Moab area housing task force, which some of you are familiar with, Jasper and Mary and others. And one of the goals of the task force is to provide continuing education for community members and outreach. And the task force is composed of a lot of different organizations and local government and community members. And I think since COVID, there hasn't really been as many outreach opportunities. And obviously, the local government and our organizations have been really hard at work. You know, trying to solve this affordable housing crisis. And so we were, we've been really thinking that some sort of housing forum, kind of similar to the business summit, but a little bit smaller in scale. Would be really beneficial for the community so that community members can hear, oh, okay, this is what's been happening. This is all the programs that are in the works. Being done, what's being done, what are some solutions, what, how can I learn more about like myself as a renter or homeowner, that sort of thing. So we are proposing the 2022 Moab area housing forum to take place in November, November 14th of 2022. And like I said, we've kind of been spearheading this, we've been getting some assistance from Ben, just because he's been having, you know, he had such. Such phenomenal job organizing and leading the business summit in February. So I've kind of been taking a lot of his ideas and inspiration. And so we've created just a preliminary budget and a program, kind of again, preliminary idea of some programming and presentations. That we think would be really great for community members and also businesses, developers. Just targeting all sorts of different groups. So if you take a look on your screen, we are hoping for any input or feedback from this group for the budget and the programming. So essentially, we're thinking we need like a late afternoon, early evening sort of forum. So that community members who might be working a normal nine to five would actually be able to make it, because a lot of times during the day. Those aren't able to go to a community event like this. We're looking at rental spaces, actually tomorrow, we're going to be looking at the Spring Hill Suites, which seems like it would be. A good capacity, we're kind, we've kind of been estimating maybe 75 people. Kind of maybe like 100 tops floating in and out, this would be a free event, so unlike the business summit. We want to make it accessible to anybody. So we'd like to have refreshments, I've been looking at suite cravings. And then just other items include printing materials, thank you gifts, advertising giveaways. And then we'd also like to have a videographer there. Recording the presentations or the workshops so that people can use it as a resource later on, or if they're not able to make it. So they'll be able to get the information that we'll be providing for. So that's a super quick rundown of what we're looking at. I think most of the funding would be towards refreshments, giveaways and the rental space. But TBD on all of those.
Does Spring Hill let you bring in food that's not catered by them? That's a great question. We're meeting with them tomorrow.
Yeah.
They like to do that, they like to cater. If you go to the LM, they will tell you the same thing.
Okay.
But the space room in the Mary at the LM, they're, it's small and, it's small, it's cute for 70 or 80 people.
Yeah, I think we also got a quote from Hyatt. Which we could not really get to as well, so Ben's just going to reach out to a couple.
Yeah, I think the fire code at the Hyatt doesn't permit as many people as we want to be budgeted for. I think they were closer to 60, whereas at Sprinkle Suites, I think it counts for 100. And so that was our lead and also I sent out a few queries to hotels just to see if we could do a quick event, tour space and who'd be up into it. And we, we've only had a few replies, so I'm going to keep the outreach going, but we have the Spring Hill Suites listed here because they did seem interested in supporting this. And then Laura, you were just, you were a little quiet, so I just wanted to just emphasize in case this wasn't said. That I think that the videographer services component of this forum is really important. As the folks at HOSU and the land trust have educated me on so well. Is that so many of the people that we want to target in this community for education about tenant rights, about what's actually in the affordable pipeline? As opposed to just housing policy on a high level, it's very hard to get them to these events sometimes. So the goal is to hire a really professional videographer and get some great sessions together so that this is a great in-person event. But then it also provides lasting resources that HOSU and MacHoltz and our office can really use to advocate for folks who are in the renting situation. So correct me if I'm, I'm wrong on that, but I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that aspect of this.
I think that was definitely the goal of having that service there.
Kelly has her man raised.
No, it was, it was, it was Karen. I was just curious. Oh, you did, I'm sorry, Kelly, you go, shoot.
It's okay, so. I'm wondering if. If there's, if there's a free space or a lower cost space, I understand wanting to have a really nice space for this. But have the budget for the rental space, you're not positive how many people will come. The videography, to me, spending more money on that might, I think a thousand dollars might be a low estimate there, I just thinking. But I'm wondering if there isn't, you know, the Grand Center is not ideal, I get that, but it seems like it'd be free and for the inaugural. Of journey, that might be good, or maybe USU would give a good deal. At their new campus, because four grand for rental space, not that I don't want to support local businesses and not that I don't want it to be a really nice space. But that seems like a lot of money, half your budget and, and not even sure. How many people will attend? I mean, I, I hope that a lot of people will attend who aren't the regulars at all of the meetings around housing that are already out there. But, but it seems, you know, it's, it's a topic that a lot of people are passionate about and some people don't care about. And as you said, a lot of people won't be able to attend in person, so I'm, I'm just wondering if the budget for that could be reduced.
And then.
Kelly, thank you for bringing that up, I was just going to mention that, yeah, the Mark and Star Hall are spaces and, and we, I know we've had. Housing and, I mean, various, I mean, UDOT, transportation, everything that, you know, done in those spaces. And I was just going to, and then I was also going to ask, is it just local? Folks who are working on housing, are we inviting? People from Salt Lake who are in charge of grants and. I, I'm just curious what, what the target is.
I think right now, the scope is we're.
I think right now, the scope is we're just going to be targeting more local. Depending on the success or turnout of this year, I think that could be something expanded. But like we were just saying, there's been so much happening and so much good work and momentum down here. I think we'll start with local. There is, Caitlin's going to speak a little bit more towards programming ideas that we have. But I think one really valuable session that we've been talking about is having someone from, I think, Utah Labor Services talk about fair housing and then tenant rights and landlord rights. And we have a contact, and I believe he's based in Salt Lake. So that would be someone that I'm interested in connecting with and potentially inviting down. But other than that, I, at this time, I think we'll keep it local, but open to ideas.
So like, so people from like, oh, Olean Walker, they wouldn't be coming down, or, I mean, that's, that's.
I, I think that that's probably too high level for this. The focus of this forum is to kind of get out a lot of information. I mean, over the last couple of years, housing's gotten a lot worse. People are really struggling to find options. And so, I think this is an opportunity for the community, development community, business community to learn and engage with local officials about what's going on on the city and county level. An opportunity to provide, like, residents opportunities to get housing resources. So, so yeah, like Laura said, I mean, we're totally open to bringing down people in Salt Lake. I'm kind of brainstorming who of my contacts we can bring down that would be helpful, but yeah.
The locals are the audience.
Yeah, the locals are the audience.
Yeah. Unless it's somebody that's going to give a fair housing presentation or something like that. Yes, yeah, exactly. Yeah. And then just to speak to folks' questions about the rental space, I totally understand the budget potential concern. I think what we were envisioning was, it's awesome that the Grand Center is super accessible. I also really like the idea of USU, I haven't looked into that. So, that could be a potential idea. But I think we just liked the idea of kind of straying away from, this is not necessarily like a local government event, but this is for the greater community. And so I think that was just the idea of hosting it at.
And I will add on Laura's note that the 4,000 here, you know, this, this is meant to be workshop by this body. It's exactly what's happening, so thank you all for laying in. If folks have more experience on what we can expect a hotel to offer us for an evening, I would love to know. I did reach out specifically to these hotels and ask them if they would do it at a significant discount or for free, because it's for a nonprofit. And the fact of the matter is, we just haven't gotten a single quote yet, so I was over-budgeting on the event space. I certainly hope it does not cost 4,000 to rent a room for, what is it, four hours? That was just, again, in, in the spirit of us, you know, overestimating in the hopes that we could talk about it, which we're doing right now. So folks have better ideas on how much that should cost, how much it might actually cost, as well as these venues that we pose. That's all great. So, I, I think USU would get behind this for sure. I know that Laura and Caitlin have concerns about Grand Center, which I share, just in terms of a government face on this. So I think USU is a great place for us to start. If folks have other leads, I'm more than happy to try and make those connections.
So, I was just going to add one more concern with the Grand Center. It's just, it's really hard to hear. It is so hard to have a conversation. And, and I was going to ask if there's any part of this forum that is asking, you know, for maybe some feedback? Like, if you've got a bunch of developers there, like, what are the obstacles, you know? I, I see it as a really good opportunity for, for our government officials and developers to really, like, hammer out what these problems are to kind of get to some solutions. And I think that's hard to do in a space that.
Yeah, I wonder also. But like, also, there's like the professional morning where you have, like, people who are doing this for their job, whether on a policy side or development side, like, really getting into details on some of this stuff and having some workshops and focus groups. And then the afternoon, being that like public focus, like, here's everything that hasn't happened. This is actually what you should, first of all, you know, through housing policy, what's happening along the way, what's happening, Land Trust, and how you need to start, and all that kind of stuff. And I love that kind of balance.
Yeah. And that was definitely one of the main ideas that we have, is setting aside a certain amount of time for business folks, developers, government, that sort of, that sort of sector, have maybe targeted workshops or presentations for that, and then have another public session, so.
I, I was just going to comment that there are very, you know, I think we really bring down the rental space. Because like even Zion Bank offers that free space, it's looked at 100 people. And, you know, and that would not be government, no one would think of government that place.
There's a couple of hotels that have spaces too, like Quinta and the MOAB Valley.
So in my experience, MOAB Valley Inn has been more expensive than Marriott for us. Marriott, so Spring Hill, I could talk to them as well if you want. They've, they've given, at least chamber-wise, they've been really easy to work with. Hyatt is, yeah, it's kind of small, but I haven't tried that one. That might be.
And the food is really good.
Yeah.
I like it, you know?
That's the best room.
The rooms are done.
And you might get people there that just want to see it.
It's a nice hotel.
And like I said.
Downstairs, there's no windows. It's a little, it's pretty.
And like I said, yeah, Ben and I are cheering for it tomorrow, so I think we'll have a better idea on the quote. And again, if we can kind of plug that we're happy, we're doing this for business, community, all that, perhaps they would be.
Kelly, you're right, yeah.
Yeah, so the first several years of the business summit were at USU, and it was USU's old campus. And it worked out just fine, there were breakout spaces, you know, it got crowded and got bigger, and, and then it grew that way. I, I just have concerns that you want 70 people there, I hope you're going to have 70 people there, but that's, you know, that's, that's, it's risky. And I think USU would be really great for this.
Does anyone know the best person to reach out to at USU for that?
I'd read it, I'd go.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah.
Great, someone send me that.
Yeah.
Share someone else.
Awesome. Any other thoughts on this? Kelly, you got your hand raised.
You want to speak about? Sure, yeah, well, I don't know if Kelly had another question to talk after that.
No, I just meant to lower it, sorry. I did lower it, and then I raised it again without intending to. Apparently, I can't use my mouse.
Um, yeah, so we have kind of a rough idea in terms of programming, like Lauren Benavry talked about. You know, we're thinking about doing the first half of this forum focused on high level, probably having more conversation between elected officials, local businesses, developers, just to kind of hatch out high-level solutions. I know City and County are working on a lot of housing policies. And so I think having an actual conversation is a really great idea. We've talked about doing kind of a refresher slash overview of the HGHO. I think partially targeting that maybe at one point toward the development and real estate community, but then also having some resources for people to attend to be able to better understand what it means to live in an HGHO unit, how to apply for those, how to connect with the developers that are building those. We talked about bringing in a presentation from local businesses about the employee housing solutions that they're providing. So if Lacy or any of you have specific businesses that you would recommend at the business summit, we had Jason Taylor talk about what he's done. But I know a lot of businesses are really stepping up, so I think the more we can have different options, that would be great.
Yeah, a lot of people, like, this letter to get it to us, because, yeah, businesses need to solve this problem.
Yeah, some of them are really trying. And I think that different businesses are doing different things, whether it's providing, you know, stipends or actually providing counseling themselves. So, yeah, yeah. We definitely also want to do just a general update from city and county about what all's going on. I think there's a lot, and even between the city and county, there's, they're kind of mashing up, but are also not familiar with each other's doing. Like Laura said, we talked about doing fair housing, and then probably also bringing in some resources through the multicultural center that are focused on, like, emergency housing resources. They launched their sole safe outdoor living campaign, so kind of getting, giving an update and a general overview of resources for those who are potentially experiencing houselessness or are, you know, somewhere on the verge of losing housing, what resources are available? How do you kind of find housing in such a hard world? Another big thing that the Housing Task Force has been working on for a while is updating the MOAB Area Housing Plan. So something we've talked about for this forum is, in the housing plan, there's an action plan that is kind of utilized by city and county, Housing Task Force, local housing agencies to direct projects and policies. So we've been talking about having kind of an interactive passive workshop where people can provide, you know, kind of do sticky notes or provide some kind of feedback on the solutions that they would like to prioritize. So, potentially, we'll incorporate other things to get additional feedback. You know, at the business summit, we did an employer survey, and I think we want to have some kind of set aside workshop to get more community input to include in the housing plan. So, there are just some loose thoughts. We're definitely open to feedback from this body, what, what you think would be useful. I think even just talking about venue space, at one point, we were talking about maybe using the Mark, but the Mark is kind of small for all people being in one room. I don't know if there's a possibility of doing track, and if so, what would those two tracks look like? So we're, we're still kind of locked, we're looking for feedback at this point, what would be most valuable for the community.
And we're bringing this to the Housing Task Force, like, we're going to have a big discussion with the task force next Thursday at our meeting as well. So we'll get some more feedback from them. All of these ideas have just kind of been through us and Ben and sprinkled with August's. Any feedback or ideas? I really agree with August's idea about having it, the, the sections with the developers kind of separated from the ones with the community members. Yeah, I might miss the next meeting again. Yeah, and are you thinking about just one evening, or are you doing, is this an all-day thing? Again, that's just something here. To top though, it seems like a lot for one evening. Yeah. If you're going to have, right? Because I think there is a lot of benefit from having the developers have those more one-on-one conversations with the policymakers so that they can.
Yeah, I think something that we tossed around as an idea that we, the Housing Task Force did before the pandemic too, was, you know, I think there's also a possibility of making this into a series. You know, we, we used to do more, you know, we'd bring in speakers more regularly before the pandemic. So, I mean, that could also be a potential, it's to kind of dedicate a budget to a series of events, you know? Instead of doing it all in one night, we do it in three or six, kind of break it up each month or each quarter.
I mean, there's so many things that just, just weren't session for resources for, for people looking for housing. I mean, that could take a whole day.
Yeah, absolutely. Awesome. So, this is one. Ben, I, I can't remember if you said you had a break next week. We have at the moment 126,000, that's kind of dedicated towards, towards housing support generally, at which we're thinking of requesting for 10 for this. And I know we had some sketches of the amounts for the rest of the programs that we're discussing. Do we have something that we can look at? I can't remember if we have that thing either. But that would probably be useful.
Actually, actually, we, I don't think we have great sketches. So, the problem we're running into is that this, this item that we're discussing right now is about as finite as we have in terms of numbers. The Nexus study, which is out for bid right now, last time I checked, we have no bids on that. And we have, you know, committed to paying some portion of it, but we're really not sure how much it's going to cost. I think I've been told to expect upwards of 100,000, in which case we could fund, you know, somewhere between half and all of it. Unfortunately, Elisa is out of town right now, so I don't know that we could get a substantive update. We could ring Josh and see if he knows about it, but I'm not sure that he'd be privy to any bids that we have received in the past few days. When it comes to the de-restriction pilot, I know that Ben and Laura at HOSU are working diligently with their regional partners to understand what a study might cost to understand how our agencies would put that program together. I also know that Laura is doing some demos with software providers in the near future to understand how much a good compliance software would cost us, which is another cost consideration we considered. And then we are working slowly but surely on putting together an ADU incentive package. But unfortunately, I, I personally don't have a great idea of what any of these items would cost, since they're all still very conceptual. Does that make sense?
That makes total sense. So maybe let's just make sure we're understanding each of those components and where we're at. So the Nexus study specifically is basically to provide research to ground, provide legal basis for the county to pursue and Assured Housing ordinance, which the city did the same strategy. And so, basically, don't support that research. The de-restriction piece, maybe Laura, if you can kind of provide an update of where we're at on that, or our thinking is that? I think originally, we're thinking like, hey, give 50 grants, 60 grand of program like this, and just see how far it goes.
Yeah, so for a little bit of a background, when we say a de-restriction pilot program, there are a few other small western mountain towns who have implemented this de-restriction program where folks essentially get a de-restriction put on their house for local workforce. So if they ever sell it or rent it out, it has to be for a local employee of the county, kind of similar to the HGHO program qualifications. And in exchange, they get a certain amount of money from their county. It's usually like 10 or 15% of what the value of their home is. That's kind of the number that I've been seeing with other models. So originally, our first thought was, oh, we could put aside money, specify a amount of money to start this program, see if homeowners are interested in putting.
They're not, basically.
Exactly. We did kind of realize that the amount of money that we have right now might not necessarily be enough, especially if we're going based on the value of homes, which obviously are high right now. So, instead, we're maybe thinking of using, I don't know, maybe 20, 20,000? That's a very rough estimate, towards potentially getting some sort of consultant just to get this project running. Ben Riley, my, my boss, has a couple of contacts at RCAC who might be interested in helping us develop more of the model of how this would actually be implemented. So we were thinking about maybe using the funds for that.
Basically paying to study a proposal, if you wanted to make an impact with the de-restriction program in Grand County.
Right, how much of an impact?
How much each asset, we were.
Yeah. Really, the idea of the de-restriction program is to protect the existing housing stock that we have so that long-term hits for the local workforce instead of building more. So, I like the idea personally.
The additional housing, the ADU is what's under the de-restriction or the entire.
No, that's a different program. So this would just be a single-family home that someone would be like, oh, I'm really, I want to protect, you know, my home if I sell it, to make sure that it goes to someone who's going to be fully occupied at working in Grand County.
And the Vale program has kind of doubled the count from an assistance program, because they typically get in at the point of sale. Yeah, so if I'm a nurse at the hospital and I can mostly afford a house, but, you know, the last 20 grand that Grand County is going towards to basically buy the asset that it's a de-restriction, that's offsetting the down payment requirement for that young person in Grand County.
Yeah, so Vale has a very successful program that we'd love to model.
So it's not designed to be a down payment assistance program, but it kind of has served a secondary function. As, which I think is a really exciting implement.
When Vale came and spoke to the county and the.
When Vale came and spoke to the county and the city, you know, the the problems with that, I mean, I I really don't want to try to compare ourselves to Vale. We don't have the same coffers at all and their programs. Are in the millions. So if you're talking ten percent on a five hundred thousand dollar house, it's fifty grand. I mean, that money goes quickly and I'm just curious where we think we are going to be able to sustain. That money is that is that creating another nonprofit like Vale indeed? Is that coming from the government? What? Where do you guys see that working?
Great question. I think my my thought was primarily coming from, okay, we have this million dollar reserves, et cetera. And if we're getting about a million dollars a year for economic diversification and housing support at some level. Ends up being a priority for the strategic plan that, you know. I think it's feasible to imagine if this turns out to be like the bit, one of the bigger ROI's for. Increasing housing availability and sustainability that, you know, we could pull like half a million dollars a year annually from economic diversification to go towards a deed restriction. Program. That's where I'm thinking about it because up to this point, I didn't see a sustainable funding source. But that seems that would be, that's where I think about it personally. So obviously, we talked about where that funding comes from and how much it is, what could potentially compete for that funding. So I think that's a really important question, but I think the goal would be, we've talked about the restrictions as like this idea that could be really good. But there hasn't been a price tag that fits our area and has an impact associated. So I think the purpose of this amount of money would be scope that out. Get an idea of if strategic plan says, let's go do your housing stuff and this is top of the pile of of a program that connects the budget. Can I have a turnkey solution in a way?
I'm wondering, so if we do that and we hire somebody to scope that out. I don't know if this would be too much, but if they could maybe also scope out a program. To incentivize turning short term into long term. That's something that if if. You know, maybe it could even be passed down to the visitors, the money that would go back into a pot to sustain that. Through TRT and whatnot. So.
Buying the rights to have an overnight accommodation on that property.
Right, right.
Which I'm sure.
So just something that because because this program is great, but it also depends on the selling of homes. Whereas if someone would willingly convert, it could happen tomorrow, you know, or what?
Yeah.
So. And so that would be something to scope out also.
And Winter Park has been very, very successful with turning overnight accommodations into long term housing with that. With that subsidy. So there these all these programs are out there.
I think that would be great to add.
Yeah, we haven't.
Um, I said, I well, to the city, I can, I don't Caitlin or whoever, I can send that information again.
Yeah. You sent me that a while ago. I can I can relook it up.
Two city people in different roles now.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I thank you for all that feedback. That, yeah, so so we kind of. I like, we have this program that we want to do, but how do we get funding? So this is kind of just the preliminary swipe. And potentially hiring someone to continue looking into the feasibility of it. And then the other part is a compliance aspect, which we've mentioned really briefly, but basically. Especially like within Caitlin's role and my role, I do the HTHO administration at HOSU. As that can, as that program continues to grow and as if we do potentially implement a deed restriction program. How are we going to basically organize everything? How how are we going to have all of the records in one place? How are we going to have annual compliance to make sure that. Whoever's occupying these homes are locally employed within Grand County. So like right now, I'm able to have everything under control with the with the current HTHO properties that we have. But when this program grows to three hundred units and we have multiple people renting and occupying. It's just going to get pretty out of control. So.
And it's a city.
Oh, that's great. I would love to talk to you further about that. So.
All of my financials and email you.
Awesome.
An idea at least what maybe per unit cost could be.
Yeah, because I'm starting, I'm I'm starting to look into different software programs. That would be good for compliance for myself and for. Michael potentially, once you also have three hundred units of folks. I've been in contact a little bit with. Vale indeed and what they use and then also with Park City Housing. So I have a couple of leads for that. So I'm interested in. Getting some demos, seeing what would work for our needs. It's looking like I would estimate estimate those software programs would be ten to fifteen thousand a year. I guess. So that's that's another aspect. It's not like the most glamorous way to spend ten thousand dollars towards housing, but it certainly is. In the long run, an important component of.
Glamorous to me.
Thank you, Ben.
Cool. And then the last piece is, you know, we talked about ADU incentives and how to make that work. So we, Ben and I had a meeting with. And Rachel had a meeting with Bill Hulse from Grand County Planning and zoning, just to get an idea of. What, give that feasibility. Gotcha. And one of the things that he found is like, one of the, one of the, one of the projects in the works still basically tiny, I'll drink. This is costing like two hundred thousand dollars per. So it's like, so from a cost perspective, you know, if we're getting a percentage of that, it's improving in some way. That's a much bigger number than I think it used to be for sure. And then the other piece to also think about that he was kind of leading us towards was. Second kind of floor hanging through is renovating internal spaces so that they can become internal ADUs. So whether that's. A basement and making that compliant codes that you can have a separate impact, addresses, et cetera. And that's going to be cheaper than building a whole structure. And then the last piece is just as as simple as covering impact fees for people who are trying to do these types of programs. And so and rather than, because we can't forgive them for the most part, because we have to forgive everybody legally. But we can cover them with a grant program. So whether that's, you know, water and sewers, impact fees with counties or what have you. If you're going to develop an ADU or do construction to renovate it internally, you would make it up to code. Could be as simple and go much farther. So we're just covering. And that would, especially if the program's a fifty grand or something like that, that would go a long way.
I mean, as a homeowner with a third of an acre that could have an ADU in the back and a downstairs apartment that could do that, I'm open to, that's, I, there's no way in hell I can afford it. You know, doing any of it. But I have, I have a home and I have an area that is open to that and I have a downstairs apartment when my son leaves for college in a couple of years. But, you know, it's the truth. Like I, there's no, I'm not touching it. I can't.
I think that that's, we keep banging our heads against the wall about ADUs because that, I mean, that's the question. It's, I mean, it's new construction. It's.
People who have the space.
It's.
Need the cash flow, don't have.
Right.
The the leverage to pull it off.
Right. There's no way. I have no.
You have no time, you know, it's it's still a new construction project. You look smaller, you're.
Also, the cost of construction and materials and all the rest of it at this point too is like absurd.
And the demand.
Like I'd rather put it in a pool, but.
And the demand of.
And the demand of construction.
Finding somebody that could do it. And especially a small project.
Right. The landscaping prior to it too, you're like, wait a second, you know. It's a lot.
So so yes, the need is there.
Need is there. And I know other people who have have that. Own homes and have that exact same thing. We're all in the same sort of.
Wondering if there's some way to.
So the incentive would need to be big.
Well, we need to be big, but I think it also has to be part of something bigger. I mean, like, you know, HOSU is a developer in Fort Worth housing. Like, I'm wondering. You're making me think like, what if it was just like, hey, I'm offering my space. I I have the space. I want to do it. I'll get like a revenue share, but. You know, HOSU develops the actual tiny in the backyard, gets a portion of the revenue, eat a portion of the revenue. There's no cost to you, but you're basically offering up the space.
For a certain amount of time.
For a certain amount of time.
The ownership stays.
Ownership stays within.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know. You have to work that out. We believe that making it work so that like someone who actually can get like low tax credits for whatever. To finance this kind of stuff, it's cheaper for you to.
I think it'd be pretty hard to get tax credits, but that's.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know what I'm talking about, but you know.
But what about bank loans? I mean, are they even going to want to take on a loan like that for an internal ADU? I don't know if the banks have even like.
I guess it depends on your credit.
Right.
Well, in this.
They'd say yes to me. I know that's right at the same time. I'm not, you know.
But then you're taking on.
Then I'm taking on.
Right.
Yeah.
So, you know, again, it's like. Study it. I don't know. But, yeah, I, again, it's like clearly need, I think a good idea. Do we have enough money to put off ourselves? What is our role? How do we fund it? Have this year? How do we get out of the county's coffers by the, as soon as possible realistically, so we can fill out this report by November one?
Some of these studies are going to take up like, if you get a bid on them.
Right.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of that.
And we could figure it out. It could be like possible around a study piece to get the events out of our conference with an MOUs. I mean, that's kind of how we do child care. It's like, we've given the money to a third party to implement the program with reporting stipulations, but it's out of our program yet.
So you talked about targeting Bill about doing your grant program for impact fees. Basically to ADUs, would you consider opening that up to, you know, any new construction that's willing to do like a purpose and it's a deed restriction or. Because that could be an avenue. I don't know. I'm thinking about a hundred thousand dollars, maybe like sixty thousand dollars for ADUs, you know. Creating some kind of grant program to help people in general try to get a house here, build a new house, their incentives.
Yeah.
Require them the deed restrictions outside of HTHO or ADU house.
I'll be to that. Okay, I'm looking at the time. I'm looking at we have to do one more big thing today on on what I'm going to probably propose because Ben and myself, Mara, Caitlin. And Lisa and other Ben have been working on this kind of a staff. I think probably the best way to afford is get like one to two board members who want to kind of get on a kind of subcommittee to get. This proposal generally to a place where it can be reviewed, approved in time for us to submit everything with the grant program stipulations. And take it out of this meeting and then we'll hammer that, bring it back sometime in August. I would, I don't think we have to move anything on that, but basically if anybody like on the board is interested in participating in that.
I'm involved as for NIMBEN in the housing force. Okay, I'll do it.
I I know.
I'll add.
Rob has also been engaged in these conversations.
I'll add that whoever does volunteer to work on this with staff, our next planned meeting is next Wednesday, August third. We have not set a time yet, but that was when we had all these fun due dates. Caitlin, I see you smiling. I assume that's because you've done everything and you're just so on top of it.
Well, I was just wondering if I had that on my calendar, but.
Yeah, we haven't set a time yet.
So lay up, lay your hand up. If you can volunteer, anybody else want to get in on the fun? Y'all need.
I'm I'm meeting with Emily Campbell. It's tomorrow morning. I can ask her.
Okay.
She might be interested.
Okay, well, that's enough for now. We will send up a follow up and if anybody changes, has a change of partner wants to get in on the need to be, we'll share with everybody the timelines.
These are good. Circulating.
Yeah. Any other final housing thought for the bond agenda wise? Saying no, it's the bond. Ben, stop triggering screen. Thank you. All right. Most fun part of the day. Get there. All right, some folks have been waiting all meeting for this. I'm looking at, you know, uh. But so we've been working on this literally since January. We've talked about putting a strategic plan together of some kind. And we've been, we've gotten. Got pretty close and I I worked with a couple of folks to revise this and spent the weekend actually like. Really just dive into it, making making it be kind of a coherent piece of. Work rather than here's a bunch of things that we want. You fill in the blanks, Mr. Consultant. And I think that it's come out to a really good place. So I'm just actually going, this is actually, I'm going to read through this. It's not that long. This is just the scope of work, kind of the kind of warrants of RFP details. And after I read this, if anybody has had time to look at it and have any feedback, then we'll talk about it in there, but I think it's worth going through. So basically, the way I've kind of raised it is that there's a handful of inputs, you know, so there's an initial objective assessment. There is. From a high level, there's kind of a, just checking out everything that's already happening, whether it's past planning efforts, current planning efforts, the general plan, et cetera. Connecting that with community stakeholder decision maker engagement, making sure we're getting all of the right feedback, like all the holes. And then asking them to provide us with basically an implementation plan. What are you actually going to do with all of this good, good brain thoughts that you could have? So starting with the first piece of initial objective assessment of Grand County's economy and economic development department strategy. So the first piece is to evaluate the existing economy. So again, this is where asking an outside consultant to do this work in concert with us. Step one, identify the components of the local economy that primarily rely on transient guest visitation. And assess the opportunities and risks posed by our community's current lines in the tourism industry. Part two, identify existing sectors of the local economy that do not primarily rely on transient guest visitation and assess the opportunities posed by expanding those sectors. So it's kind of, you're looking at both, you're looking at the risks and opportunities of both of those things, assessing them all holistically. But asking for both of those kind of things in 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 somewhat of several lens. Second, identify additional economic opportunities. So identify additional industries that we don't already have that are. Well suited for Grand County, express concern for preservation of surrounding natural resources and quality of life concerns. And part two, complete a comprehensive commercial and industrial real estate analysis within Grand County that identifies parcels right for industrial, commercial, and or mixed use development. C, evaluate the workforce's qualification, skills, abilities, and availability. Additionally, identify locally available workforce development programs and opportunities. D, evaluate community assets, infrastructure, and additional context that pose opportunities or risks to the development of the local economy workforce. Including our demographics, housing, educational institutions, commercial and industrial real estate stocks that's spoken above. Local regulations, licensing, zoning, transportation, utilities, healthcare, childcare, natural amenities, constraints. Think about the plant, water availability, et cetera. And other quality of life considerations. So we're not asking for like a a dissertation on each of those, but just making sure that we're thinking about all those things in concert. And then it's a small one, but kind of a lot. Inventory the existing vision, mission, strategies, and objectives of our department. So, you know, making sure that what we're already working on, such as this grant stuff. Is incorporated and kind of inventory. Part two is to review the relevant existing plans and planning processes and progress. So. Well, for those online, we've got a nice little bit of thunder. Review and summarize relevant planning documents and planning exercise. This will ensure that recommendations of the strategic plan are grounded in the context of the following existing processes. So for Moab City, they're in the middle of really creating a new division project tomorrow together. So making sure that we're able to take advantage of the findings and outcomes and kind of the general process there. Within Grand County, we obviously have a lot, but our general plan, making sure that this actually speaks to the general plan. The strategic plan that's adopted as a part of the general plan, the land use scenario planning study. Sales tax weekly report that we have, I'm like, there's a bunch of interesting stuff. A couple of highlights are the. The future, the site futures report that the Umpire Committee that Mary has been involved for a very long time. It's creating that back. There's a new five year window on the site features committee. So making sure we're thinking about the Umpire Site as a part of the development in the future. And and any, all of these past studies, including, we also have a CRA that allows us to do some creative financing. Plugging into our AOG. Plugging into our AOG, so the Southeast East Coast Association of Local Government. This is a five-year comprehensive economic development strategy. Current one is twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three. The next one will be twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine. So making sure that, you know, not only are we plugging into that, but that's plugged into this process. The governor just passed economic vision twenty thirty, and they're currently going through a process to develop the unified economic plan that connects all of the sets across all of the regions of the state, connecting them together. And then just taking into account, you know, US use kind of master plan for their campus and how we plug into that. And then they had a, a group that did some research on the community. Uh, so that's a lot, uh, but kind of think, you know, giving everybody all of the options. Not asking everything to be incorporated, but. And then part three, so community stakeholder decision maker engagement. So we're asking the selected firm to propose a plan to solicit general public input, key stakeholder input, decision maker input in order to inform the outcomes of the strategic plan. Public gate plan should include, but not limited to, uh, community forums that allow for the introduction of the concept of the plan. Clarification, uh, and presentation, I missed the should be input here, input, and then clarification and then presentation of the plan's recommendations. And then, you know, I think crucially is, there's a lot of folks that have been deeply involved in this that we want to make sure we're getting their input pretty directly, whether it's through focus groups or, or one-on-one interviews, including representatives from Grand County's government, Moab City's government, Chamber of Commerce, Grand Water and Sewer, folks in Thompson and Castle Valley, and Cisco, Grand County School District, the business community at large, nonprofits, US Moab Regional Hospital, local developers, real estate industry. So, you know, when we come back to review, if there's any, if there's anything I've missed on here, let's make a note of that. I think so.
I know.
Presentation, and then lastly, making sure that this presentation is the county commission, the city council, to introduce the concept of the plan, solicit it, but see clarification, present the recommendations of the plan approval. And then lastly, the actual plan itself, basically. So we're asking them to put together an implementation plan for our department. So A, provide recommendations for Grand County economic development for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-eight. So that's five years, based on the initial objective assessment, part A, review of the existing planning processes, the part two, and the publication process, the part three. And we're asking for them to help us develop a vision statement for Grand County generally and the approach to economic development. And then a mission statement, strategies, and objectives for our office. I didn't add a timeline, but that's probably something that the desk will as well.
August, can I start with a, just a couple of questions? And, and please give me some leeway as the, as the newbie end, but on it. And I'm gonna just preface this that I am a, I'm fiscally very conservative. And I was a part of many studies and plans. And, um, when I look at the, like, the line, like, the nine that the county has done, there's probably half a million dollars worth of strategic planning that we've paid for. Is this something that your office? And, and forgive me, because I don't really know what your job title is and what Ben's job title is, or, and also Chris Baird's. But is that, is this something that can't be done in-house? Because if we're looking at sixty-five thousand to a hundred thousand dollars, like, can, like, I mean, I just look at all this, everything that Kelly Thornton's office has done, like what we've done with intergenerational poverty, like, that this is just the counties, like, what is the, the two thousand eighteen economic development plan? Does that, I, it seems like you're asking somebody to come in to synthesize everything that has been done. A, a, am I, am I wrong? And I'm, and I.
No, so, yeah, I mean, I think my, my perspective was actually kind of building off of a comment you made before, which was, how do we make sure we're not duplicating, uh, and wasting time and kind of wasting this plan's dollars? And I think, like, the focus is certainly not, like, look at all of these and do, like, a dissertation literature review and make sure we capture everything. My, my thought more so is make sure that whatever the recommendations come out of this are actually aligned with what we already said we'd want to do before. And for the, for the vision project, for example, the city's doing, they've already done a lot of really great community engagement. So how do we make sure that we're not wasting that when we're, when we're making diversification plans? But I think, you know, as a community, we've been asking for for a long time. What does economic diversification look like in Grand County? And, uh, that's, that's, I think, where we're coming from. Does that, does that address the question or is there still?
Well, I, I just, I mean, it, it feels like your department was created to sort of do this work. And I, and I'm curious, is it, is it out of your, your, your staff's scope to be able to complete this? Is this something we need professional help outside of, like, the resources we have with, within your department?
Yeah, I would, I would say that, you know, we feel like we need help. Ben and I, you know, if we were to carry out something with this scope, I think we frankly lack the technical expertise to do something like commercial land use analysis, uh, which is something that we're asking for. I think we could do a lot of this probably if it's the only job we have to do. But, you know, for me, I'm also managing the tourism piece of what we're doing here. And, uh, I, I think we're, I guess the quick answer is yes, I do think we need the support. Because the other piece for me is, is to have, uh, the community engagement parts and having a facilitator that's trained and able to capture all of the input. And, you know, I don't think it's a more controversial topic in town as to what our economic future is. And so having a facilitation professional who's able to capture all that community engagement, decision maker engagement, stakeholder engagement, and put that all into one kind of plan that's active and, and that becomes the living document for our, our, our forward moving, you know, direction that we can speak to every time we go to a budget meeting. We say, well, we said we're gonna do this for quarter three, twenty twenty-three, and we're, we're making that happen. And we're asking for the budget from the county commission, and we've got the mandate from the people and, um. Yeah, so I guess, I think it's a need, but I totally see the concern, you know? Shouldn't we, shouldn't we be able to pull this off internally? And I think frankly, I'm not a planning professional.
I mean, I see, I definitely see pieces that could be pulled out, but it, it seems like there's a, heck, a lot of, of information that already exists that could be collated. I mean, and it just, it just, when I was reading the RFP, it felt like a correlation, having somebody come in and, and just synthesize everything that's been done.
Yeah, and, and I would say there's probably an opportunity for something like, if this piece, you know, having then, you know, next year, that's a part of this, like, put together that, like, what a booklet review for this piece. So I'm not, I, I think that's certainly something we could, we could, we could make a note of, of like saying, let's pull it out of the RFP, but still, this is gonna be the project, like, this needs to happen. We still need to do this, whether it's us or something else.
August. Any, any qualified consulting firm will do that work themselves.
Right.
Before they submit a proposal. And if they haven't done that work, then the proposal you get is going to be based on today and their ideas of the future, rather than the conversations that have already occurred in the community.
Yeah.
And the issues and challenges that have already been debated and discussed in the community. So to me, that's their job before they submit a proposal.
Right.
And, and it doesn't need to be considered part of the criteria. And in the proposal, they should submit included with their recommendations or findings of recommendations, they will include the list of the resources that they've consulted before they've actually put forward to you and to the commission a recommendation.
Right.
So I, you know, I, Karen's point is appropriate about the, the cost of this. And, and one thing I would encourage you to do is when you, when you release the RFP, put a not to exceed figure on it.
Yeah.
That may be lower than the amount you've actually budgeted. Because you may find that you have a really high-quality proposal that would cost ten, fifteen percent more than the not to exceed figure, but you really want that group to come in.
Right.
For all the reasons that they demonstrated in the proposal.
Yeah, so I, 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 I think that's, both of these points are making me think that this piece is almost more like materials to be provided that we've just put this together, and here's a folder of some reference material, rather than saying this is part of the ask is, you know?
All right. If, if I could just add a few comments on this, I'm just gonna bounce around. I think what everyone's saying is really important. I appreciate it. To be frank, um, our office does not have the capacity or the expertise to do this. I just don't believe it does, and that doesn't speak poorly of anyone. I think we work really hard and I think we know what we're good at. Writing the, the scope of what we're calling for, which I think is a really important plan for determining our next steps in economic development. I just, I, I think we're a little bit too involved with what's going on to actually understand what we're not doing that would be good, what we are doing that's ineffective. I think that for a lot of these exercises, people will say that arguments like that are reasons why it's great to have an outsider. And regardless of, you know, if we change the scope, we change the cost. I think it'd be great to hear from Noah, not to put you on the spot, Noah. Noah has been on both sides of this. Correct me if I'm wrong, Noah, you've done the writing of plans and you've also done the advising on the writing of plans from both the, you know, the public sector and the sort of, you know, nonprofit advisement sector that you're in. I'd like to know, you know, just with, with what you've been doing with August and I, what you see are needs for Grand County and, and why you think it would be important to have that third party doing some of this work? Because I, I, I would love to say that we could do this, and it scares the crap out of me to think about.
Right, and, and the idea of hiring a consultant is that you do it in partnership, right? You don't want a consultant to come in and just drop, this is the economic development strategy in your lap without working with your department, right? So it is a partnership. It's not just, um, you're not just paying for a study, you're paying for someone to sort of guide you through the process. That being said, in my experience, I haven't seen a lot of these strategies done internally. And I think it's probably because economic development departments tend to be really tiny. And August and Ben are already probably doing the jobs of five people, just the two of them. So I think realistically trying to get this done in the timeframe you all need it for is also a reason just to hire someone. Not to say, I think they probably could do it if they could do it full-time, um, in my experience. That being said, I, I do agree, you know, with the idea that this research ideally is done before the proposal's submitted. At least some of it, right? You know, you're not, you don't, you want a plan of action. You don't need a, a research report, right? You have those very clearly. What you need is it laid out over the next five years. This is what we're gonna accomplish and what August explained to me, especially because of that TRT tax, right? You want that to continue to come to the county and therefore, you know, you want to prove that you have used those funds effectively in saying, this is what we, we had a plan for how to spend the money. We spent the money how we planned and these were the results, right? So, um, that's also really key in getting this strategy out now and making sure that there's a plan to use those funds. And you all are doing some amazing work with your funding already. I don't think that'll be, you know, but having some more structure to it. So you have, you know, more than a one-year timeline when you go to county commission to get your budget reviewed. I think would just be helpful in proving that impact. Does that sort of summarize it just from, you know, the limited time I've been able to spend with August and Ben so far?
And that's great. And I think the last piece too is that I forgot to include in the earlier presentation is that the, the diversification part of TRT does sunset in twenty twenty-six. And so, you know, our, this five-year plan basically has a three-year part of it. That's like really the important part, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. And then, so that when we go to the legislature and say, look, it all's made it work, that this money has been allowed us to do. And the, the kind of implication is that we, on the other side of the house, have done a really good job with a smaller budget on the tourism piece. And that that's not like become a burning pile of garbage. Because that's what's gonna let, make this money go away. Is that, if it's clear that we need that money in the tourism piece. And that we have a plan that's ready to go if the legislature says yes for the next two years. So that's, you know, we're planning for what we have and we're planning for what we might have as well. So I think that legislative piece, right, works a lot for sure. Yeah, basically.
So, so I love it. I think it's great, but my, my first, like, gut check.
Yeah.
Is in that very, it feels real to the top to the very beginning, because this is the economic development strategic plan, not an economic diversity plan. But it feels a whole lot like we're focusing on the diversity piece of it. And I get that because it's, it's the TRT money that is carved out for diversification that's paying for it. But it is the TRT money that if we don't continue to support and keep strong that economy, it goes away. And we're seeing right now business numbers dropping dramatically. And so I think I would feel way better about it if we just made sure that we include in that initial objective assessment how to keep, basically how to keep our existing tourism, our existing industry and economy strong. And not let it weaken in the process of trying to build up others.
Yeah.
That you'd be supportive of it. Yeah.
This was also a little bit, or a little bit bigger, maybe a little bit considered. Honestly, this year looks like we jumped back like two thousand nineteen and before times, all times of Moab by its reason. And luckily, we have this year a particular group who are visiting like Horizon Group.
Yeah.
And honestly, the first thing I just wanted to mention a little bit, like, did we ever say as an authorization of this city or like Grand County or as in Moab City, welcome, here is your shield. Thank you for coming, I, and, you know, our area or owning them or just talking a little bit, communicating. Well, we have a person here for sure, Vega, but I think this is much bigger than Vega. I mean, all of us has, we knew it. The town, I mean, decided there are thousand, hundred ideas we have with this, but looks like this is one of the, my concern, honestly, as a newcomer, newbie. And TRT, if you're talking about, there are other things we can do and then we can suggest during our meetings. But that one is currently one of the, feel like on fire, I think.
The film industry is really.
This is, this is diverse. I mean, this is the core of the diverse, you know, you're talking about them.
All the bullet points of economic diversification.
Exactly.
It's, it hits and, and has, and, you know, I, I think that I have voiced it many times. You know, sometimes it gets heard and sometimes it falls on, you know, deaf ears, but it's, it's happening now. It is on the ground and despite what everyone's feeling about numbers lowering, there's a project here for potentially the next two years. That's, that's very helpful. I mean, I just, we're listening to you too, though, like, there is a whole lot of money that needs to be spent. And if film is economic diversification, we, we might potentially lose a lot of things because Arizona just up there, film incentive to a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. And that's legit.
Yeah.
Utah just passed twelve, right?
And it was a lift.
And it was a lift. And yes, there's another eight point, whatever, to make it a total of twenty in the state if you're shooting, you know, in the Utah county as well as in rural. But a hundred and twenty-five million, there is, we, I am literally, I'd go to Arizona. And, you know, it's a pretty state. It's got some really pretty red rocks. So, and, and it has Monument Valley technically, except for one of the bits. Which I push really hard for. But I don't know, I mean, I've mentioned this in the past too, like, there, there, we could have a actual, uh, film, a local film incentive program with the money that we have, not necessarily for a Horizon-sized project, but why not? But I, this Horizon is not the only project that I personally am working with on the ground. I had a meeting last night, I had a meeting this morning. I continue to have meetings constantly, whether they're Zoom or in person of actual projects that are wanting to come and shoot here. And we don't have the workforce, so there's that part of it. that are wanting to come and shoot here, and we don't have the workforce, so there's that part of it, which workforce development for actual film stuff is a huge part of it. We don't have the infrastructure, which is also a big part of it. I mean, I'm doing my best to sell this incredible place that's been filmed in for seventy-five years, but we don't have what it takes to be the, you know, as competitive. And I don't want this to be a film company thing, but I, but I, but we were speaking this morning, because I was in a meeting with a client that, you know, happened to be over at Capitano this morning.
Yeah.
And he's, you know, I, you know, that's, it's a, it's a, it's a well-fledged movie that's also potentially coming here, but where, you know, what, what are they getting for it? And we had, and no one said thank you to anyone. I have to put together gift baskets, I have swag, and that's all gonna go. But like, there are some really cool people on the ground here that should be getting, like, hello, thank you for coming. Welcome, welcome to Moab, we're really psyched to have you, man, because we wouldn't be, you know, we wouldn't be floating if we weren't here.
What are the particular infrastructure barriers?
Actual buildings.
Before we get too deep into this, yeah, let's not, now, we could, yeah. I, I, my hope is that this helps that conversation, because it's, we're looking at existing activities, film questions, existing activity. We're looking at existing industry, film and existing industry, we're trying to figure out, based off of community assessment, all of the above, you know, what are the strategies? So part of that strategy is, like, really double down and creating that film, like, center for dreams, and that, that, that is potential outcome. So I think all of these conversations, like, this is just the, the structure to create those conversations in a real way, that's not just, like, out of meeting and then it disappears, right?
I mean, my take is, I, I just, I haven't heard in all of the conversations over many years, what, what economic diversification means to anyone, what, what, give me anything other than film that anybody's thinking about as an actual thing, I haven't heard it.
Summarize the need for this strategy more than what you just said, which is that it's not defined. And so that's what we're, we're asking, is like, have a facilitator, help us, help us, what we're saying, it is collectively, as a community, distill that into one real plan that says, here's what it is. We agree collectively, we have conversations, we went to bat, figured out what economic diversification looks like and what the strategy is for the next five years.
So, so August, and I'm, and I do not mean to divert, so if we as a group said, hey, we are going to support women and children's education, and we are gonna aim to get every high school graduate a high school degree and then also a skill or a secondary degree. Like, we have just automatically created a skill set for our community, like, opportunity for, you know, financial cognizance of, of how to do budgets. Or, I mean, like, education, I feel is, like, so key. I mean, it, can we, like, can we determine that's what we want to double down on?
Yeah, I think the point of this is simply to create the space for these conversations and to make sure we're talking to as many people in the community as possible. And that's why the facilitation community engagement piece is so crucial, and to have it not be run by someone who is just a county official, because, yeah, we're funding this, but I think the goal is to make this, my goal is to have this be owned by everybody. Everybody's like, yep, well, eighty, let's say eighty percent, right? So ten percent on either side, we're never gonna get to say yes to anything, but if you get eighty percent or even sixty percent in the middle, it's like, okay, we've kind of compromised a little bit, we feel generally good about this, and have this conversation, so it doesn't sound, feel like it's like it was decided in some back room somewhere for the community, as much as possible, having this be the community's economic diversification plan. And then the other piece, the Lacy's question about, like, wanting to see more tourism in there, I think I definitely want to add that piece, like, making sure that, because that's in our importance, making sure we're trading existing economies, but, you know, we've, we've been talking a lot about the next piece of RFP that I'm gonna work on is the tourism strategic plan, right? So slightly different consultant, but same, like, you'll focus of, like, on that other piece, what is our brand, what are we getting behind, what is our brand in, how are we gonna go about navigating this rocky future, with both of these kind of, like, not siloed, but hopefully working in parallel together. But it's not in here, because it originally wasn't here, actually, we pulled it out just because the scope of that is so huge in and of itself, and requires different expertise to execute, but that's something that we're really gonna prioritize.
That, August, the only thing that I would, there was some wording in here, and it really seems to focus on the next three years. I would, if we're gonna try to go to state legislator and, the legislators and say, hey, we need this funding and fortuity, then I would, I would kind of set this up to have long-term plans, like, for, you know, five years and ten years. What, what those goals are, so it looks like, hey, we're, we're gonna need to continue this funding because we need to accomplish, like, the, the dream, which is, you know, ten, fifteen years down the road. That was the only, the only thing that I sort of noticed in that.
Noah, Noah, you had your hand, maybe you're gonna address this, this very point, but go ahead.
Oh, no, I was actually gonna mention what you said, August, that we had talked about the tourism, because it's such an important component of the economy. But, you know, Grand County has a really quite sophisticated and advanced tourism sector already, and including it in this with the, the outcomes that, you know, we talked about trying to get out of that as well as this diversification was just, that the two would get muddled and confused, and you wouldn't necessarily get a really strong strategy for either. But we did talk a lot about making sure that what is, you know, the industries that are attracted or supported complement the current tourism industry sector and aren't going to take away from that. So we certainly talked a lot about that. The five-year, ten-year plans. So economic development strategies should really be action plans, like, this is what we're gonna do with our resources in the next three to five years, typically tend to be their timeframe, because you want to be very action-oriented. And more typically, like, your general plan or your county-wide plan will be longer scope, right, will be ten, fifteen, twenty years. There's no rule that says you can't do it that way, but it tends to be more difficult, right? Because budgets change, or funding changes, or, you know, staff, or the, you know, bigger economy can change in that time. So I don't think there's anything wrong with having those ten-year goals, but it is very difficult to create, like, set hard strategies for outcomes you want in that kind of timeframe, because as we all know, the world changes so much in just a couple of years. So that would be my only caution in, in trying to sort of push out the scope that far. But that's definitely up to all of you, sort of how you want to balance that. I just, I just wanted to show that we're gonna, like, we'd like to have that funding. I mean, we're always gonna have tourist, I mean, TRT taxes, like, and, and even if the world falls out, there's still gonna be people who want to come and, and take a break here. So, I, you know, just showing that, like, what you, I guess, act plan, this is what we have accomplished, this is what we're going to accomplish, but what we can, if this continues, I, I just think it's a sort of an important.
I think that's great, and I think we, we could add a piece about, like, we're not going to make a ten-year action plan, but we want to make sure that our five-year action plan is within a longer-term vision, like, and that the, you know, the goals are to get us on that pathway. And I think that I, I probably just change perhaps that section, talking about vision, adding some piece, that, that vision is really, like, based off of where you think we're gonna go, for stuff like the Umpire Site, that probably isn't gonna come online in five years. And I don't, I don't know for sure, but, no, it's, it like, we're
That'd be close.
That we want to have our kind of stuff ready for that, and so I think you're totally right. This is have an action plan that's pretty focused, and that's what the implementation plan is, but take advantage of the community case to chart that future. Yeah.
One quick thing that I noted when I read through this, I notice in the beginning how you did say that you'd mentioned utilities, but then in the list of the stakeholders you want them to engage with, I think we do still need to list there, like, maybe Rocky Mountain Power, Emery Telecom, some of our, you know, our major utility providers. The infrastructure element to that.
Yeah, so we are at five, I think probably the best thing for everyone to do is if everybody has access to this and has comment access. So I think probably if you still have thoughts that you haven't gotten out, or I missed it, didn't capture it, you can take some time, ideally as soon as possible, make those comments, and if anybody wants to meet tomorrow or Friday with me one-on-one and go through this document with any additional concerns or questions, I'm available. Otherwise, we don't have to take action on this now, but I'll, I'll be continuing to work to get this, like, ready as soon as possible and, and try to get this approved sometime in August, not, second meeting is today is when that, which Ben is diligent in working on, but Any last thoughts?
Just a comment.
Yeah.
I thought this was a much more focused version of edit and update of the original draft. And it was much easier for me as reading it to see where you were trying to put the focus.
Awesome.
And you've got it, targeted industries, site inventory, workforce development, it's all in there.
Awesome. Sweet. Yeah, that's good to know that my, like, all have worked. But otherwise, I think we'll probably get to adjourn. Thank you, everybody, we're at the end of our agenda, so much, we'll get in contact, reach out to everything, follow up. Otherwise, our next meeting is in August, I have to schedule something for regular, to get some stuff approved in time for the September one, for the deadline, et cetera, but otherwise, basically, we'll have to raise our housing stuff. I think that's, yeah, for next steps for now. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Well done.
If anybody wants to be in the movie, they should show up Friday or Saturday.
I'll be there for sure.